So the May nineteenth meeting, we have a motion from Commissioner Addison, second from Commissioner Ellender, are there any objections? Seeing none, these items have now been approved. At this time, I will ask Vice Chairman Cliff Grouse to read in the rules for conducting public hearings.
Rules for conducting public hearings. This is a public meeting. Any interested member of the public who wishes to comment on an item from this agenda may comment in person at City Hall, two-two-two St. Louis Street, third floor, room three-four-eight during the meeting. Members of the public desiring to speak on a particular item should refer to a meeting agenda and complete necessary information prior to the meeting by filling out a request to speak card indicating which item you wish to, to which you wish to speak and place it in the designated location prior to the meeting. Applicant and applicant's representatives for the proposal will speak first for a total or combined period of not to exceed fifteen minutes. Proponents will speak, then the opponents. Each speaker will not be allowed more than three minutes. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks by avoiding duplication in their presentations. Applicant will be allowed a total of five minutes for rebuttal. Opponents will not be allowed time to rebut. Items placed on the consent agenda by the Planning Commission staff will not have time allocated for speaking unless there is a member of the public at the meeting who wishes to speak on the item. In such cases, the proposal will follow the standard procedure. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Grouse. We can now move on to the consent agenda, Mr. Baldwin.
Consent items for withdrawal. Item ten, S-two-twenty-five Stillwater subdivision, proposed major residential subdivision with public streets located on the north side of Comete Drive, east of Plank Road, withdrawn by the Planning Director and Parish Attorney due to the denial of case ten-twenty-five by the Metropolitan Council on June eleventh. Consent items for deferral. Item three, case thirteen-twenty-five, fourteen-eighty-two Lobdell Avenue, to rezone property from single-family residential A-one to neighborhood office, N-O, located on the west side of Lobdell Avenue, north of LaSalle Avenue, deferred by Councilmember Adams to July twenty-first. Item eight, Kep Cup four-twenty-five, twenty-four-seventy-five Jackson Avenue, proposed accessory dwelling on property located on the north side of Jackson Avenue, east of Plank Road, deferred by Councilmember Harris to July twenty-first. Item eleven, C.S. six-twenty-five, Knox and Farenbacher tract, proposed flaglot minor subdivision located on the north side of Bueller Drive, north of North Flannery Road, deferred by Planning Director to July twenty-first. Item twelve, C.S. seven-twenty-five, I.R.W. Ehrman tract, proposed flaglot minor subdivision located on the west side of Greenwell Springs Road, south of Stony Point Birch Road, deferred by the Planning Director to July twenty-first. Consent items for approval. Item four, case sixteen-twenty-five, twenty-six-oh-nine and twenty-six-twenty-three Cork Street, to rezone property from single-family residential A-two to two-family, A-two-point-nine, located on the north side of Cork Street, east of Lavenia Street. Item six, case eighteen-twenty-five, eighty-six-eighty-nine, Seagan Lane, to rezone property from heavy commercial C-two to commercial alcoholic beverage bar and lounge, C.A.B.-two, located on the east side of Seagan Lane, north of Perkins Road. Item seven, Cup two-twenty-five, Timothy Hill Ranch, proposed philanthropic organization for foster care facility on property located on the east side of Carlton Road, south of Comete Acres Avenue. Item nine, Cup five-twenty-five, Faith Seventh Day Adventist Church, seventy-three-thirty Mickens Road, proposed addition to an existing religious institution on property located on the south side of Mickens Road, east of Coronet Drive. Planning Commission staff certifies that all of these items are consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Unified Development Code.
We have requests to remove two items from the consent agenda to be heard in regular agenda order. Those two items are item number four, zoning case sixteen-twenty-five Cork Street, and item seven, conditional use permit, Cup two-twenty-five Timothy Hill Ranch. These two items will be pulled from the consent agenda and placed in regular agenda order.
Thank you, Commission members. You've heard all of the remaining items that have been placed on the consent agenda that are to be taken with one vote. Are there any members of the Planning Commission who have an item that they would like to be pulled and heard as part of the regular agenda? Are there any members of the public present who would like to speak on an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion? Motion from Vice Chairman Grouse, second by Commissioner Addison, are there any objections to accepting the items that have been placed on the consent agenda? Seeing none, these items have been approved, and we can now move on to the regular agenda, beginning with item number two.
P.A. three-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four, East Baton Rouge Parish Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan Update, to amend the transportation element of the comprehensive plan to include the twenty-twenty-four Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan Update. This is a request to update and amend the transportation update of future B.R., our comprehensive plan. The update includes revised data, an assessment of current conditions, updated policies, and updated implementation strategies. This was initiated by BRAC in late twenty-twenty-three as part of a scheduled four-year update cycle. The effort aligns with the Complete Streets Ordinance update adopted by Metropolitan Council in June of twenty-twenty-four that identified this update as a key project to support and advance Complete Street implementation. The Complete Street Citizens Advisor Committee has recommended approval of this update, and the BRAC Commission voted in favor at their last meeting in April twenty-twenty-five. BRAC, along with representatives from this office and other city, parish, state, and local entities, and with assistance from HNTB, led public outreach for this plan, conducting multiple public meetings and workshops early this year.
Planning Commission staff recommends approval as this update is needed to accomplish goal five of the transportation element, to enhance and, to enhance the bicycle and pedestrian network throughout the parish and accomplishes action item two-point-two-point-one under the Parks and Recreation Element, continue coordination with L.A.D.O.T.D. and BRAC to develop and implement a bicycle and pedestrian master plan.
The Planning Commission Office has received three messages in support to this item.
Okay, Commission members, at this time, I will open the public hearing. We have several speaker cards. Our first speaker is Mark Martin. You have the floor for three minutes, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, members of the Commission. I worked for quite a few years, well, from the very beginning on this, to get the Bike-Ped Master Plan developed. We developed this brochure, which provides a condensed version of what's going on with the major plan. And if you look at the large map on the inside, you will see that what it demonstrates is that right now and within the next five years, we will have a network from which we can build out further into the parish. All these projects are either on the ground or under construction and paid for, so there's no budgetary impact on this. There are two smaller insetts in the back, which gives further detail for how this, the current network is working, and we hope to continue to expand this out, which will give everybody in the parish an opportunity to engage in active transportation to their benefit and to all of ours. So, vote in favor. Are you, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir.
Or not.
Our next card is for David West.
I stand in unwavering support of this plan and its recent revisions. I'm a native Baton Rougean, I'm also a lifetime cyclist, and I have a teenager that loves to cycle to a degree that we wonder if she'll ever own a car. We'll see. I feel that the plan and the recent refinements to this plan make it a safer and more attractive place for young people like my daughter, as well as other people who, whether through circumstance, forward-thinking for health reasons, or just the pleasure of the open path, want to be more connected more ways in our lovely parish and city. I think the plan has been under amazing stewardship during its lifetime, and I urge us to continue propelling it forward with everything we have.
Thank you. Our next card is for James Fuller.
I am a graduate student at LSU in Transportation Engineering, and so I thought it really important to really engage with the transportation network that we have here in Baton Rouge. Although I live in Broadmoor, which is a nice ten-mile commute from LSU's campus, I do try to ride my bike as often as the weather is pleasant enough to allow, at least. And so I know from experience how difficult of a task that is and how dangerous it feels and kind of how invisible you feel on the road, just because drivers aren't used to seeing bicycle infrastructure, they don't expect to see cyclists and pedestrians on the road, because it is kind of a rarity. I do feel a sense of accomplishment in that it's enjoyable and that I've done something really difficult, but I don't think that's why our bike trips should be enjoyable, they should be pleasant and relaxing and convenient and safe more than anything. And I think with these updates to the master plan, that that can be a good step in that direction. It's a, it's a big, complex problem, you know, anything involving traffic and transportation, so it's going to take big and complex responses to that, and I think this could be an important part of that, at least, especially with the idea of build it and they will come. I think that applies to cyclists just as much as it does to projects with cars. And honestly, I, my bike got a flat a little while back, and I haven't fixed it because there's, there's few incentives to when you feel like you're fighting an uphill battle just to, to get where you're going. So I get in my car, and I add to traffic, and I add to pollution, and I slow down everybody because it's just easier whenever you've got a lot going on. So I think any step in that direction would be a really positive move, and I think this is a great way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next card is for Amanda Lenada.
Good afternoon, Commission members. First, I just want to thank the staff of the Planning Commission and all the stakeholders in the committee that worked on this plan update. I know how much work goes into that, so thank you. I talk to young people all the time who have either lived in other cities or traveled to other cities, and I feel like every single one of them says they're looking for that walkability, that bikeability. So I really appreciate what's in this plan update, and I fully support this plan amendment, and I request your favorable passage. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next card is for Nicholas Lenada.
Hey, I'm Nick. I think I put I didn't want to speak, but I am in favor of this.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, it does say that, I apologize. It was right after another one that said they do want to speak if needed, and that's for Mark Heinecke.
I'm also a employee of BRAC, as well as a Baton Rouge resident. Thank you for your consideration. It was enjoyable working with Vance on the master plan update, and I personally have heard a lot of positive comments about it, and I encourage your full support and recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that was our last speaker card, so I will close the public hearing and invite any questions, comments, or motions from the Commission. Commissioner Scroggs.
Yeah, I've got one question for the gentleman who spoke first. Do you have just a moment? And to be clear, I'm going to make a motion here in a second to approve, but this is more self-serving than anything else, but i- is there any talk, I'm looking at the plan, on connecting Pennington to the LSU lakes? So are you kind of, I mean, it kind of would seem to be a pretty strategic path to connect that part of town to LSU?
Yes, in fact, I think much of that path already exists, but in it will require signage, not construction.
Gotcha.
So when they added the bike lanes to Hyacinth from Stanford, that made a great connection over to Glasgow, get up to Glasgow, go through Roseanne and Pollard, and catch the, the trail behind Pennington, and connect over to Perkins Road Community Park, which is also a nexus for the medical mile? That's not the name of it.
Yeah, for the Health District.
The Health District, yeah. And that's going to lead into much more.
Yeah.
So the next phase of this, I hope, will be wayfinding, which will cost a lot less, go a lot faster, and get people who are not familiar with the streets yet, and make it easier for them to get from one place to another. But actually, once you get to the lakes, you can go on the levee, and when you get at the levee, then you can go all kinds of places.
Good, good, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Scroggs. That motion receives a second from Commissioner Coleman. Are there any objections or any additional discussion? Seeing none, that item is approved. We will move on to item number four, case sixteen-twenty-five, twenty-six-oh-nine and twenty-six-twenty-three Cork Street.
Case sixteen-twenty-five, twenty-six-oh-nine and twenty-six-twenty-three Cork Street. Property is located on the north side of Cork Street, east of Lavenia Street, Council District Seven, Harris. The applicant is J. Angel Ortiz, Jr. The current future B.R. land use designation is compact neighborhood. The existing zoning is single-family residential A-two, with a requested zoning of two-family residential A-two-point-nine. Case sixteen-twenty-five, twenty-six-oh-nine and twenty-six-twenty-three Cork Street.
Staff certifies that the proposed request meets the criteria for a change of zoning, being consistent with the comprehensive plan, compatible with surrounding uses, and conforming to Unified Development Code requirements.
Commission members, at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite the applicant to speak for a period not to exceed fifteen minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Angel Ortiz with Zetro Construction Services, the applicant for the owner. So the request is basic, and our support rests with the same findings that the Planning Commission found, which that is consistent with the comprehensive plan of that area of the city. It is compatible with the surrounding uses because they have the similar structures within a street away, and it does conform to the UDC. So we felt that this is a smooth transition for the same findings that the Planning Commission found when they did the review.
Thank you.
That's it? Thank you.
We have one speaker card that is in opposition for Mahana Farah. How bad did I mess it up?
Not too.
Okay.
Mahana Alfarah. Sorry for my voice, my Baton Rouge is loving my allergies right now. So, thank you all for having me and letting me speak. I moved to Baton Rouge five years ago, and I live in the neighborhood on Oleander. And one thing I love about our neighborhood is that there's a lot of single-family homes and a lot of people that have been there for a really long amount of time. I'm a little concerned about a double, like a two-family or multifamily dwelling in the neighborhood, because since several of the changes have been approved, we have had an increase in crime, we have an increase in traffic in our neighborhood, we are having roads blocked by other things that are going on, parking has become a major issue. As I said, crime's been more prevalent, and also in the staff notes, it talks about some of the public transportation, and those stops are being removed, there are signs on them just within the last week. So I'm concerned about that as well. There's also a lot of, they're tearing down a lot of old houses and building multi-bigger homes, and so a lot of affordable housing in the neighborhood is leaving. So I'm just, those are some of my concerns about what's going on in my neighborhood, but I appreciate, so, just thought you would like to consider those before you go on. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our only speaker card, so I'll invite the applicant back for a five-minute rebuttal.
Just to say, I understand her concerns. Our intent is always to work with the city to make sure that the property that's going to be built there complies with code, to have adequate parking, and that the property is not going to interfere with some of the concerns that she had, which involves road signage and anything else, that's another matter. So the structure itself is going to be built with the guidance and requirements by the city when we pull the permit. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close the public hearing and invite questions and comments from the Commission. I believe Vice Chairman Grouse would like the applicant to...
If Mr. Ortiz could come back? I understand, these are, these are to be two-family dwellings?
One two-family dwelling, yes, sir.
One, one two-family dwelling?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Director, are, do we have any two-family dwellings nearby? I mean, is this, is this a, is this that unique?
So part of the staff analysis, when, when we took a hard look at this rezoning, was we acknowledged there is two-family duplex housing on the ground now. It's actually at the southeast corner of the same intersection, southeast corner of Cork Street and Lavenia Street. So that was part of, part of the analysis going into the staff certification, is that exists on the ground. It's still considered low-density, overall low-density residential duplex is allowed in residential neighborhood under future B.R., and it is at a corner, so all that went into the staff analysis.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have of you, Angel.
Thank you.
With that, I make a motion to approve.
We have, we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Grouse. Is there a second to approve? We have a second from Commissioner Boyd. Commissioner Coleman has some additional questions. You may want to just kind of stay close to the podium, Mr. Ortiz.
Come back, Mr. Ortiz, because my question is, have you had a conversation with the neighbors, with the people in the neighborhood, and have you had a conversation with the councilwoman in that area?
No, ma'am, I have not. I tend to do that when we're involved, working there. I don't own a lot personally. It's, this is, I'm an applicant for an owner who enlisted my help in going through the process because we're familiar with it. We do a lot of intrusive remodeling around the city, and most of that, a lot of them require variances. So I have not spoken with either of those people as of yet. I was actually going to talk to her after the meeting to kind of clarify some things. And it is, it is our intent to build what we're asking for in the zone, but we don't know one-hundred percent if that's what's going to take place, but that is the intent, because you never know what the owner is going to decide finally when, when that happens.
And I guess that's her concern, because you don't know, and, and you haven't, yeah, anything can happen. And so you said that you're working on behalf of the owner.
Yes, ma'am.
Has the owner had a conversation with the people in the neighborhood and/or the councilperson?
To my knowledge, I, I can't answer that question.
Any additional questions or comments from the Commission? Commissioner Fowler.
What can be done with this zoning request?
So if it were to be rezoned, it, it would simply allow a duplex in a single-family house would be the only, only permitted uses in the zoning district.
So just a single-family home that has a duplex set up?
Correct.
And, and no other uses under this can be done?
No other office uses, commercial uses, no. It's simply our, our only duplex zoning district.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyd.
So, looking at the map, there's, it says this is Lot Nine and Lot Ten.
Yes, sir.
Are those two buildable lots?
Yes, sir.
Like you could build two houses right there, technically.
Separately, you wouldn't be able to do it. That was one of the, the things that led us to the initial conversation about the combination when he applied. One of the lots was non-conforming enough to prevent adequate space for parking and whatnot, e- even though the, the measurements say it, it's, the design of it is not there. It's not conforming.
Additional questions or comments? There's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Grouse that was seconded by Commissioner Boyd. Are there any objections to approving this item? Seeing none, this item is approved.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on to item number five, case seventeen-twenty-five, seven-seven-seven-seven, Greenwell Springs Road.
Case seventeen-twenty-five, seventy-seven-seven, Greenwell Springs Road. Property is located on the north side of Greenwell Springs Road, west of Lanyard Drive, Council District Five, Hurst. The applicant is Laquinsia Governor. The current future B.R. land use designation is commercial. The existing zoning is like commercial C-one, with a requested zoning of commercial alcoholic beverage, bar and lounge, C.A.B.-two. Case seventeen-twenty-five, seventy-seven-seven, Greenwell Springs Road.
Staff certifies that the proposed request meets the criteria for a change of zoning, being consistent with the comprehensive plan, compatible with surrounding uses, and conforming to Unified Development Code requirements.
Planning Commission Office has received two letters in opposition. You should have been copied and emailed those letters in opposition. We also received, I spoke to Councilman Hurst personally, as of this morning, and he has concerns and expressed his opposition to this rezoning request to C.A.B.-two.
Thank you. Commission members, at this time, I'll open the public hearing and invite the applicant to speak for a period not to exceed fifteen minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share something I am truly...
Would you mind moving the mic a little closer to you?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share something I am truly passionate about. I have always believed in, every city needs a space for people to come, to come and unwind, connect, and enjoy, good conversation and relax. Culturally rich environment, for me, that space is a hookah lounge. My entrance and opening a hookah lounge comes from more than just a business, it's a root in culture, community, and connections. Hookah lounge, a hookah has always been more than just smoke, it's a tradition that brings people together, many cultures, and represents of hospitality, friendship, and taking time, taking time to slow down and enjoy the moment. And in this today fast-paced world, I think we need more of that. I want to create a lounge that feels welcoming, luxury, and inclusive, a place where people of all backgrounds can come together and share a story, music, flavor. My vision is to combine the rich tradition of a hookah with modern lounge vibes, complete, completed with great music, and also artisan drinks, comfortable seating, and atmos- atmosphere that is encourage people to stay relaxed and return. There, there a growing demand of unique upscale social spaces, especially ones that are offering a culture experience and not just a night out, and hookah lounges fills that need. It's not about the partying, it's about having a space to connect vibe and feel like they belong. I believe that would be, with, with the right atmosphere and quality products, excellent customer service, and marketing, it could, it can become that space. More than anything, I would, I would, I want to build something that reflects on who I am and a space building on a culture, creativity, and community. Thank you again for your time, and I'd love to answer any questions or share more about my vision.
Thank you. We have a couple speaker cards that are in favor. The first is for Gerard Torrey. You have the floor for three minutes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, members of the council. I want to, first of all, thank you all for the opportunity to address the council regarding this matter. My involvement in this started back in April of this year, when I was approached by my friend and client, Mr. Gary Case Moore, who is a, who's not only the owner of the property in question, but he's also a longtime businessman in this community, and Mr. Case Moore is here, he asked me to come over here this evening with him to address the council regarding this. I met the lady who just came to address the council back in April, Ms. Governor, and at that time, she shared with me also the same things that she shared with this council about her vision, her desire to go ahead and have not only a business that would be welcoming, that would be consistent with the other businesses in the area, but also one that was in conformance with the ordinances and the regulations of this particular body. Once again, my client and friend, Mr. Case Moore, he asked me, he said, "Look," he said, "Gerard, would you please get involved and draw up an agreement for us that would go ahead and both not only capture what the design and use for this particular location would be, but also to keep in mind what the governing ordinances for the community, to make sure that, look, we have something in the agreement that captures and recognizes what in fact are the obligations regarding this particular agreement as it relates to this property." And that's one thing that these parties agreed on. They agreed that, look, the use of this property would be entirely consistent with those regulations, those rules, those ordinance of this body, as well as the state Louisiana. The parties, both the owner, Mr. Case- Um, uh, but the parties, uh, both the owner, Mr. Case Moore, uh, he, uh, believes that Ms. Governor is serious and she's going to have a lawful, legitimate, compliant business that is consistent with the ordinances and, and the rules of this particular body.
Yeah, about 20 seconds, sir.
Yes, sir. And also, uh, Ms. Governor, as she's already articulated, she will also, uh, uh, be inconsistent with what the body, uh, with this, uh, uh, council requires in terms of as a business. But thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. And our other speaker card is for, uh, Gary Case Moore. Good evening, sir.
Thank y'all for allowing me to come in and speak this evening. Uh, Mr. Torrey has told it better than I can, but, uh, I own the property, I've had it for four or five years and it's just sitting there. And, uh, Ms. Governor is sincere about wanting to put a business in there. And I hope y'all allow her to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. We had other, one other speaker card that was in favor but did not wish to speak, and that was for David Briggs. Commission members, at this time, I will close the public hearing and invite any questions or comments, uh, regarding this item. Vice Chairman Grouse.
Mr. Director, uh, under our rules is this, do we have any type of rules for, um, noise or times that we can, that, that this can operate under our rules at CAB2? I, I couldn't recall.
No, there's, there's existing city code ordinances for noise, but nothing in the zoning.
Is there something also with ABC on that, or no? That's just city?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Our motions. If there are no other questions, Vice Chairman Grouse.
Uh, Mr. Director, just for, for the record, um, what we are voting on here is CAB2, not a hookah lounge, correct? So, so if this fails, it could be another, it could become a bar or another similar establishment, is that correct?
That's correct. What's being considered this evening is, is to rezone it. The request to rezone it from light commercial C1 to CAB2 bar and lounge zoning.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Additional questions, comments, or motions? Are there any questions, comments, or motions from any members of the planning commission? Commissioner Ellander.
Yeah, so I'm kind of looking, some, we get these that are difficult sometimes, and, and this is one where I go back on if this, that this doesn't work out, that this is, um, we're rezoning this property long-term, and I just don't have a comfort with that, with the housing in the area. It looks like there actually may be, um, a daycare near the area. Uh, I just not something I'm going comfortable to, to support right now, so I'm gonna make a, um, a motion to deny.
There's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Ellander to deny this item. Is there a second to that motion? There's a second from Commissioner Addison. Are there any objections? Seeing none, that item is denied. At this time, we'll move on to item number seven, Cup 225 Timothy Hill Ranch.
Cup 225 Timothy Hill Ranch. Property is located on the east side of Charlton Road, south of Comey Acres Avenue, Council District 2, Kenny. The applicant is Matt Astopenal. The applicant is proposing a philanthropic facility for foster care. Future VR land use designation is agricultural rural. Cup 225 Timothy Hill Ranch.
Staff certifies that the proposed request meets the minimum criteria for a conditional use permit, being consistent with the comprehensive plan, compatible with surrounding uses, and conforming to UDC requirements.
Thank you. This time, I'll open the public hearing and invite the applicant to speak for a period not exceed 15 minutes.
Thank you, Ross. Uh, good evening commissioners, my name is Matt Astopenal with SJB Group, 5344 Brittany Drive in Baton Rouge.
Matt, could you use the mic?
I'm sorry, I can hear myself, but I couldn't. Now it's much louder, my apologies. Uh, Matt Astopenal with SJB Group, 5344 Brittany Drive in Baton Rouge. I'm the engineer of record. Um, so if you have any engineering-related questions, I can answer those. But other than that, Ms. Carly is the, uh, the real applicant.
Carly Wagner from Timothy Hill Ranch, Southern Business Development. Timothy Hill Ranch is a multi-state foster care agency. We serve 252 youth who are aging out, they were not selected for adoption, or they were, um, nearing the emancipation age and process in their states. So these are, um, children and youth of criminal abuse or neglect, and they're removed from their homes. Um, last year, as I said, we served 252 youth. We developed a relationship with Secretary David Matlock of Department of Children and Family Services in May of 2024. We were, um, able to find a property in Baker, which was on Charlton Road, um, the item tonight. We developed a relationship with the Tavers, they had cleared the land themselves. They had built this custom barn dominium, which was, um, very appropriate for the type of work we do with a separate pole barn, a separate apartment for a workshop space to give these youth the skills they need to live a dignified life. Um, about 75% of youth who age out in, um, foster care will end up homeless or incarcerated within one to three years. And so we want to partner with Department of Children and Family Services in fighting those statistics and being good neighbors, of course. Um, from New York, we're in Long Island, to Cersei, Arkansas, near Harding University, and now, um, in Zachary, as we are acquiring Heritage Ranch. So we have a contract with Department of Children and Family. Secretary Matlock has been out there himself, as well as Deputy Secretary, um, and the state medical director, Dr. Rebecca Hook. Um, but they are helping us navigate how to serve, um, the state in the most appropriate ways. And so this is a 52-acre parcel with, um, multi-site, um, facility, so a home, an apartment, and a workshop space, uh, that's fenced in, and even today, we had a visit with DCFS on our site in Zachary. So it would be consistently visited by DCFS officials and run with 24/7 staff. So nursing staff, direct care, um, volunteers are all background-checked, clearance-checked in all the states they've lived in the past five years. Um, we run a pretty tight ship, like I said, from New York down to, um, Cersei, Arkansas, and Tennessee. So our states are New York, Massachusetts, Tennessee, Arkansas, Louisiana. I have some conversations with Mississippi youth, there's a lot of similarities there. And, um, as I said, we want to be a good neighbor. I had the chance to hear from a neighbor who is here today, just seeking more information. Um, and we would be foolish not to listen to those requests, but also we want to follow the cues of the state officials who deem it an appropriate setting for the youth that they've guided through the years. They know these youth, they know their tendencies, and they know what kind of, um, environment will be good for rehabilitating them and giving them a chance at a dignified life. So that is us. We, we simply need zoning approval to move forward with the licensing process. We do have a contract waiting for us. And near two, almost 220 youth, um, 220 aged out last year with about 20 extended foster care beds. So that means if you're age 18 and you're one of the 20, fantastic. If you're not, you get a check and you're emancipated. And that's when you start on a tough road, right? After that life of, um, trying to heal from the abuse and neglect that got you in custody. So that's our target, target demographic we serve. I'm happy to answer any and all questions, and thank you for your time to review this. We know we're new to the state, and as I said, we have our friends at Heritage Ranch, our neighbors in SJB Group who've walked with us and discerning the best way to go about bringing service to youth here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our first card and support is for Daniel Wagner.
I signed the last card, I'm the first speaker outside of the boss. I am an associate pastor at a church about two hours up the road, so I won't preach at you, but I'll tell you a couple stories that that's good. And I think about an opportunity here in Louisiana to see outcomes be different. As Carly mentioned, 200 children are scheduled to age out of the foster care system, and I think about the way that that's intersected with my own life and what my family has looked like over the last several years. Uh, for about a year and a half collectively, over a three-year period, two different young women who aged out of the foster care system came to live with myself and my wife and our young daughter. The first one was living with us when she turned one, and the second one was living with us whenever she turned four. And it's a beautiful opportunity just to think about people who have been victims of circumstances, of societal ills and of brokenness, addiction, things that they did not invite into their own life. And the statistics do say that without intervention, early intervention, and successful outcomes through outside parties intervening in their life, that oftentimes these cycles do tend to repeat themselves. So I would appeal to you in that and think about what those people look like here in the state of Louisiana and Baton Rouge, in this East Baton Rouge parish, that you may know and you may be close to and may have intersected with women who, in our circumstance, were living in subpar environments and some government housing that was second-hand leased with lots of drugs and opportunity for sexual abuse there. Uh, but in an environment like our family in our home, we helped her, uh, get some steady employment and move into an independent living. And then for the second one, uh, Father's Day, it was this last Sunday, and she's sitting at a table with myself and my dad and, uh, my brother, who's a new uncle. So just the opportunity that is afforded through loving environments for these people who've dealt with adverse circumstances in their life, none of which they've desired to be given pathways to independent living and successful employment, is not just a personal benefit for them, but a great benefit for your community. So thank you for your time and for being willing to entertain something like this.
Thank you. Our next card, uh, is in favor and says they'll speak if needed. That is for Vicki Ellis. Looks like you're needed.
Um, hi, how ya doing? Uh, my name is Vicki Ellis, and I am the founder of Heritage Ranch in Zachary, Louisiana. I was reflecting as I walked in tonight that the last time I was here was in 2011, and when I was before this body to request approval for Heritage Ranch in Zachary. Um, we were really blessed that we were able to receive approval not only by this body, but by the Metro Council. And, um, we opened up in 2015 to serve, uh, kids in crisis on that property in Zachary. A very similar setting, very similar program. And, um, over the years, we've seen lives change, families change because of the work we're doing. Um, I apologize, I get emotional, but, um, I remember when we went through that, understandably, the neighbors on the street that had lived there their whole lives, the community was nervous about their kid's safety and their community's safety, and I appreciate that. You know, I was pregnant at the time, opening this children's home for kids in crisis and recognizing that my family was also gonna be on that property. But what we saw was that if we don't stand in the gap for those kids in this community, then we can't make the changes that we all talk about needing. Because in this community, we have kids that are homeless, kids that are incarcerated, both boys and girls, and there aren't places for them to receive the care they need, and if they don't get it, they will contribute to the crime. They will not live up to their potential, and they will not, um, become those contributing members of society. So we have to stand in the gap for them. Um, I have met Timothy Hill Ranch through an actual merger of Heritage Ranch, because the work we're doing is really important at the ranch, but it takes a lot of resources. And we've wanted to grow but haven't had those, and so they are coming in and partnering with us. Um, they have an incredible program, the great respect of all the states that they're in, and they're going to build quality services for these kids where they can live in a home and experience family, and it's gonna be safe, and it's gonna be life-changing. So as someone who was born and raised here in, uh, Baton Rouge and who loves our community, I'd just like to speak very highly of every single staff person I've worked with. We just had a small kind of kickoff at Heritage Ranch a couple of weeks ago, where our constituents came and their board came down from New York, Arkansas. They are invested in this area, and they're spending their time. Uh, Carly and her husband here are taking shifts in the house at the ranch to be with these boys. They're not just talking the talk, they're walking the walk. And so I do hope that you guys will approve and give them the opportunity to come and be another, um, organization that can change the lives of our kids, uh, girls and boys in Baton Rouge who so desperately need it and don't have a place to be that's safe. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. We have two additional cores that are in favor but do not wish to speak. Those are for Ethan Bush and Tara King. We have a speaker cord in opposition, that is for Houston Penn. You have the floor for three minutes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm the property owner to, uh, that, uh, of the land next to, to this piece of property, this Timothy Hill Ranch, they're calling it, uh, to the south. I own a, a large piece of property. It was owned by Mr. Milligan, uh, uh, that sat on the Metro Council, uh, before me. And, and when I got the court, it said that they were moving in this group home, um, next to me, I wondered what Mr. Milligan's reaction would have been. Um, this, this piece of property is located east of Baker. It's a, it's located on Charleston Road. It's a, and Charleston Road is a, a little local road, uh, that, uh, only local traffic knows about, it's a quiet neighborhood, and it's residential. And now they're suggesting that they turn into a, um, a foster care facility, a group home, I, I call it. And I'm sure that people in Baton Rouge are familiar with these type of, uh, of, uh, uh, organizations as far as, uh, here in Baton Rouge, uh, I am, uh, uh, I was familiar with two, at least two, and, uh, and then the juvenile facility up, up north of Baton Rouge here. Uh, it brings a, a certain atmosphere, and, um, and the neighborhood changes from a, uh, quiet, peaceful, hotusac to, uh, to this having to, uh, to take certain measures to make sure that you, your family and kids are, uh, safe. I said that because, um, that's what we're looking at here. You can call it a ranch or, or anything else. It's a, it's a group home setting. And, um, and as I understand it, uh, the structures that are built on there, it wasn't built by the engineer, it was built by the owners, uh, themselves. And the sewer system is moded, that's, that's not parish sewer system set up for this group type of homes with all these, these, um, the numbers. I've asked about the numbers, I was given the number six, maybe six people, uh, then eight, 10, and today, somebody told me it was up to 24. And that's, that's a lot of activity, a lot of sewer, a lot of rainwater, and it goes to the south by nature. I'm the south. So I just wanted to raise that, uh, objection, and, and, uh, hope your council will, uh, consider.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll invite the applicant back for a five-minute rebuttal.
Thank you all, thank you, Mr. Penn. As I said, we are happy that Mr. Penn is here. We had the chance to, um, I had the chance to talk to him a few weeks ago, and we certainly want to move step by step to work with us, JB Group, and others to determine the best, um, path in building. This is simply the first step in pursuing the licensure, is zoning approval. So we know that there'll be subdivision approvals needed as we make any retrofitting to the current property. Um, it is a 52-acre parcel, and the, the Tavers are a fairly large family. Um, so they had cookouts and have a couple crawfish ponds. They actually had our staff out, um, with some family out there. So they've certainly entertained and hosted more than just, you know, their family of four in the site, and there haven't been sewage issues, um, to, to that date, to, today, from hosting their own family. So I know that, I mean, we do things with excellence, and I know we'll continue to work with SJB Group to make sure that Mr. Penn's property, um, past the 52-acre line, past the fence line, um, will be respected and that we won't be. fence line, uh will be respected and that we won't be foolish to ignore neighbors, but to partner with them. Um we do appreciate, like I said, just him wanting to gather information um and know this is a partnership. So we've had Bethany Church come out and some other folks who are in Baker themselves. So right down the road, four minutes, they're also invested. And um again, I have value for that. As as to the number, I did share, you know, so transparently, Arkansas went from four to twenty-four residents in about five years, and that was due to responding to the needs of Department of Children and Family, right? So we're not going to be um slow. We move with urgency when it's a homeless youth and a partnership with the state or someone like Secretary Matlock saying, hey, I've got eight beds and I need you to fill them. We're going to move with urgency to 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 discern what's the appropriate way that we could serve. If it's not us, okay, maybe another agency. Um so we did expand our bed count on that fifty-acre property in Cersei, Arkansas. Um do you want to share that? That is correct, Mr. Penn. And, you know, with time, maybe we serve more than the six to twelve girls on this site, but we will do that in step with licensing, subdivision approval, and Department of Children and Family. They do have square footage requirements. Y'all are probably familiar with that, but there's licensing requirements. Everyone has their own dresser and um space allotted for them. And so we can't get around those, nor would we. So we'll have those um continual visits from DCFS to honor that and um that requirement and honor the kids and neighbors. Um as far as noise or anything in that regard, we have twenty-four-seven staff. And as I said, we do run a tight ship, to put it in colloquial terms, but they're working. They're called interns. So it's an onsite internship model. So it's not like a facility you may be picturing. And I appreciate Mr. Penn bringing that up. You know, there's news articles where there was a degree of negligence by some agencies. That is not us. We do not accept that type of care. And in fact, some of those agencies are shutting down, and I know that just from our relationship with Secretary Matlock. So youth are not permitted to leave the premises, walk around, ask for money or food as they have in in one of the Baton Rouge agencies. And I say that respectfully, but that that's not acceptable with us. They will be working. If they don't sleep well at the end of the night, they really didn't work hard enough. And they also are shadowing employers. You know, it's not a juvenile detention center. They're not digging holes for the fun of it, like the movie Holes or something silly like that. They are using skills, learning how to put their mind um to to work and making the most of the life they've been given so that, as I said, they can have a better chance of a dignified future. Um but once again, I do appreciate Mr. Penn's concern. We look forward to being great neighbors, to working in stuff with subdivision requirements in the next phase of retrofitting and continuing to work with Department of Children and Family. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. Commissioner members, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. And before inviting any questions or comments, the applicant mentioned uh rezoning, but this is in fact a cup, an application for a cup, conditional use permit, Director Holcomb. If you could just kind of touch on uh some of the key differences uh between the rezoning and the cup and maybe uh uh things that could happen or take place or be pursued if a cup were to become problematic as opposed to an official uh rezoning?
Certainly, that that would likely be very helpful in this discussion. We stated earlier, I believe by maybe the applicant, that they were requesting a rezoning. This this is not a rezoning that's before you tonight. It's a conditional use permit, which is generally appropriate in rural zoning, but it's a case-by-case basis on 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 whether this particular use and site plan that's before you, very specific in what's presented, is appropriate at this location or not. Uh so again, the zoning is not being changed. It remains rural zoning. This does not require council approval, but I have reached out and briefed the councilman on it, and he did not express any concerns. I I would encourage you to continue to to be in touch with his office, and and I'm sure he would like to learn more about this, um if this were to be successful. Um I did send him all the information, the details of the site plan. Uh but Mr. Chairman, to to your second point, again, the applicant, uh that this is, again, a conditional use permit with an attached site plan uh that that's appropriate, uh whether it's not appropriate or not, for two existing residential structures with a combined total square footage of six thousand nine hundred and seven hundred, six thousand seven hundred and ninety-two square feet for essentially a foster care facility. And the specific use is is classified as what we would consider a philanthropic organization for foster care facility at this location. There is very specific criteria in the Unified Development Code for a conditional use permit, uh if it were to be approved. And if the situation ar- arised in the future, if there was any problems or it were deemed to be problematic in the future for whatever reason, and I'm not saying that's the case with with this company or their track demonstrated track record, there is a very clear process to take steps uh which the council could initiate on potentially revoking that conditional use permit. So I did want to mention that. Uh the the chairman did did question me on that, but uh I wanted to state that for the public record.
Thank you, Director Holcomb. Vice Chairman Graup.
Can can the applicant come forward for a moment? The I've heard a number of uh numbers on patients.
Right.
What is what is your uh what 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 are you all looking at as far as the the number of people that she would be here?
Sure. So there are two buildings. There's a main house, which is the one that looks like the barn, if you've seen the image. And then there's an apartment, which we're adding egress windows. That was part of the the plans. Um so six to begin with is what we would like to do if both contracts were open at the same time. So four and one, two in the apartment. Um but up to twelve on this site, as is. If we were to add any additional buildings, that would, of course, be a whole nother ballgame, and that would be a future um application in years in the future, but currently.
Are these men and these young, is there boys and girls or just women?
We've applied for women, young women, so ages thirteen to seventeen for the main house, and then eighteen to twenty-one for the separate apartment. So that's through, again, DCFS. So it's not just any random eighteen to twenty-one who applies. It's through the contract. Um but our Heritage Ranch, just to be clear, site that's in Zachary, five miles down the road, it's a similar setting, but those are young men. So they've always served privately placed young men, but that's what we've continued to do there is serve that demographic. So these females and males are separated and hopefully can't catch each other too fast down the road, five miles, so.
And Matt, Matt, can you come forward for a second? I have a a couple of technical questions. Uh I know there was uh this talk of, you know, this adding capacity, traffic. Um how many, what what are we looking at car-wise here? And any, I mean, are we looking at two-car increase, five-car increase?
I mean, if that. So there there's a few uh counselors that live on site. They'll have vehicles. Um Ms. Carly was explaining to me, it's very rare for one of the women in the program to get to the point where she can afford a car.
Right.
And insure it and drive it. Um so it's it's most of these uh young ladies don't drive.
Well, one of the things, and I'm just gonna make my statement now since I have you all here. Uh I've I've designed these types of homes in the past, and you typically would like these in an area uh a more rural setting. It's calmer, it's more peaceful, there's less chance of somebody getting into trouble. Um so I I think your your your, you know, your your choice of placement is is excellent. Um I just want to make sure that, you know, you're going to follow the, you know, follow the rules. I mean, you know, I I mean, I know you may have to do some modifications to the buildings, and you have to do some modifications. Uh the MODAD or city sewer, that's something you all can work out.
That's right. The permanent office will handle all that stuff.
Exactly. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, at this at this time, uh I'm I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. There's a motion from Vice Chairman Graup to approve this item. Is there a second to that motion? Second from Commissioner Scroggs. Are there any additional comments?
Yes, I'd like to say that you all are to be commended for what you're doing. Let me tell you what I know, and that is services, housing for this population is limited. And you all serving twelve is only, it's not even scratching the surface, but you're to be commended for what you're doing and the wraparound services that you're going to provide for this population. And it is my desire that the gentleman said nobody there be driving down the line. Yeah, yeah. See them driving, see them in their own homes, see them with families. But definitely, this is a population that many really don't understand. And the first thing they holler about group homes, you know, but you're talking about a population of people uh that it could have been any one of us. And so you all are to be commended for what you're doing, and expectations are there for you to do what you say you're going to do and more.
Thanks, Coleman.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Additional comments? Commissioner Boyd?
This is more out of curiosity, but are the the school-age youth, are they, is your facility also a school, or do they go to school? How how does that?
Wonderful question. So right now, our heritage guys go to their local schools. So they do come to us from different parts of the state. Um but our Tennessee site uses the Liberty University homeschool curriculum, and we've already reached out to Department of Education to kind of determine what would that look like on site. But of course, with our twenty-four-seven staff and then our education coordinator, those those classes would be facilitated. Um but as of now, Heritage attends public school. So, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyd. Additional questions or comments from the commission? If not, there is a motion on the floor to approve this item from Vice Chairman Graup. That motion received a second from Commissioner Scroggs. Are there any objections? Seeing none, that item is approved. At this time, we can move on to communications, beginning with directors' comments.
So a few things to bring your attention to. At your seats, you have a initial UDC revision for walls and fences that was initiated last at last month's Planning Commission meeting. And the proposed text amendment will be on an upcoming agenda, if not next month, uh the following month. So I'd encourage you to take a look at that. And again, we'll have a more detailed staff report explaining that, and that will be presented at an upcoming meeting. I do want to wish a belated happy birthday to Commissioner Boyd, who celebrated our birthday, I believe, at the beginning of this month. Happy birthday, sir. Do want to bring your attention, the Planning Commission office will be closed on um Friday, is this Friday, June twentieth or Juneteenth, uh holiday, as well as a upcoming Fourth of July holiday. And our next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, July twenty-first.
Thank you, Director Holcomb. We'll now move on to commissioners' comments. And I'd like to, at this time, congratulate our newest employee of the month, Jasmine Thomas, Planning Manager of the Long Range Division. Jasmine plays a pivotal role in implementing the EPA Brownsville Assessment Grant and skillfully oversees our enterprise zone and restoration tax abatement programs. As a dedicated board member of the Louisiana Brownsville Association and an active member of the Capital Area Section of the American Planning Association, she demonstrates leadership and commitment. Jasmine coordinates staff support for the Complete Streets Advisory Committee and Historic Preservation Committee while also ensuring our website is updated on economic development programs. Please join me in congratulating Jasmine on this well-deserved recognition. Are there any additional comments from the commissioners? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion from Commissioner Scroggs, second by Commissioner Addison. If there are no objections, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. It's all, all right, man. Good luck, man.